To our Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders of our conference agenda and regular meeting for our Youth in Government Day of October 22, 2019. Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Freeholder Packer?
Here.
Freeholder Bass?
Here.
Freeholder Duffy?
Here.
Freeholder James?
Here.
Freeholder Lapore?
Here.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Here.
Director Bartlett?
Here.
County admissions, can we please have the administrative report?
Presentation of a proclamation to the Passaic County Paratransit Program for being honored as Paratransit System of the Year 2019 at the 24th Annual New Jersey Council on Special Transportation Conference. Shirley Forrest, Director of Senior Service with John McGill, Division Director of Paratransit.
Whereas the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic is aware that the 24th Annual New Jersey Council on Special Transportation Conference was held on October 8, 2019 at the New Jersey Convention and Exposition Center in Edison where the Passaic County Paratransit Program was honored as Paratransit System of the Year 2019. And whereas the New Jersey Council on Special Transportation, NJCA, in an effort to recognize New Jersey's community and paratransit agencies throughout the state, has established a recognition award program which recognizes honorees in the categories of driver, dispatcher, administrative employee, maintenance, and volunteer of the year, and selects an NJCA Outstanding System of the Year. And whereas the Outstanding System of the Year recognition award has been presented since 1992 without understanding that each community transportation service is different and unique from one another, and it takes into account how innovative this service is, what new ideas have been developed and incorporated to improve and/or expand services, how the agency serves their ridership, and many other criteria measures. And whereas selections for all NJCA awards are not made by the NJCA organizations or any other New Jersey transportation individual, the honorees are selected by a non-partisan review team made up of seven different out-of-state community paratransit agencies which reviews all the category nominations forms and submits their recommendations to NJCA. And whereas the Passaic County Paratransit Program maintains a fleet of vehicles including special lifts vans to accommodate non-ambulatory persons that provide transportation for senior citizens in need of non-emergency rides to doctor offices, hospitals, shopping centers, and county-run nutrition programs and medical appointments. And they also provide transportation services to county residents who are outpatients at the Veterans Hospital in East Orange. And whereas the employees of the Passaic County Paratransit Department provide courteous and admirable services to the residents of Passaic County. And whereas, this board wishes to express its gratitude and appreciation to the members of Passaic County's paratransit staff by recognizing them for their genuine interest and concern for the well-being and safety of the citizens of Passaic County. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic that it publicly congratulates the Passaic County Paratransit Department, its Executive Director Shirley Forrest, Division Director John McGill, and the entire staff upon being named the Paratransit System of the Year 2019. Congratulations.
I don't think I could've done that better myself. You look a lot nicer than Terry Duffey, I gotta tell you. But I would just sort of say congratulations. I know you do a great job, I see it every day. And you're hopefully quite young when you're not in my bar at your Christmas party. But we have a second and non-paratransit, we truly do, and you all care and it shows. And with all hearts, congratulations.
I just want to thank that Board of Chosen Freeholders for selecting us with this proclamation. And it's all for doing our drivers, mechanics, Assistant Director Pete, or Director Shirley Forrest, and dispatchers, and everyone involved in it. It's a team effort, so we appreciate it. And thank you.
We thought, you know what, to make it easier, I think everybody that's here, stand here, and then everybody that's here, come right here. Everybody that's here, stand up. All right. How about the freeholders? Yes.
Director, next on my report is presentation of a proclamation bringing awareness that the month of October is observed as National Disability Employment Month to educate Americans about employment issues and to celebrate the many and various contributions of America's workers with disabilities. Beth Mayor Lejos, Chair of Passaic County Advocacy and Abilities Committee.
Whereas the Board of Chosen Freeholders... Whereas the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic is aware that the month of October is observed as National Disability Employment Month to educate Americans about disability employment issues and to celebrate the many and varied contributions of America's workers with disabilities. And whereas this year's theme is "The Right Talent Right Now." And whereas workplaces welcoming of the talents of all people, including people with disabilities, are a critical part of our efforts to build an inclusive community and strong economy. And whereas activities during this month will reinforce the value of talent of people with disabilities add to our workplaces and communities and affirms the commitment of the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic to an inclusive community. And whereas several Passaic County agencies, schools, and businesses, including the William Patterson School for Continuing Professional Education, pre-college youth programs, and the College of Education, and Accessibility Resource Center, the Wayne School District, the North Jersey Federal Credit Union, the Passaic County Workforce Development Center have partnered with the Passaic County Advocacy and Abilities Committee to provide special education opportunities and programs to make employment more accessible to people with disabilities. And whereas workplaces should reflect the diversity of its people, including people with disabilities, embracing talents and skills that individuals with disabilities bring to the workplace and community, and promote the right to equal employment opportunity for all people. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders hereby designates the month of October 2019 as Disability Employment Awareness Month in the County of Passaic and urges its employers, schools, and other community organizations to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities and to advance the important message that people with disabilities are equal to the task throughout the U.S. Congratulations.
I did that pretty good, huh? Yes, yes. Do you want to present these to... Well, everybody, really? Okay. First of all, I just want to say that we in Passaic County are extremely lucky to have dedicated folks as yourself who apply themselves and volunteer and do anything that they do to help all these folks along. So I'm quite proud to present you all with this proclamation. And I think we have one for each group, I believe. I could be wrong. All ready? Well, thank you very much. Anybody want to say anything? Step up.
Well, thank you to the Freeholders for this wonderful honor. William Patterson University is here and is proud to serve the disability population and is also very proud to serve Patterson, New Jersey. So thank you so much.
I do want to say thank you and also recognize Iris. I know you're from Passaic County, Pines, or adults with autism here, one of the organizations that, you know, we partner with. But to William Patterson, to the One Stop, to the Wayne District, and they're coming up, they're running a little bit behind. To members of our committees right here, as you see, you know, I truly want to thank you all. As an advocate for individuals with disabilities and as a mom of a young adult with autism, I can now begin to tell you how important it is, and the North Jersey Federal Credit Union as well, how important it is for us to work together, to create opportunities, to provide education for our young adults. The cost of an adult or someone with any kind of disability, remember, this month is not about autism, it's about any disability, whether it could be a functional disability, it could be a mental health disability, it could be something as simple as you're disabled because you have diabetes and is a front case, right? You know, the cost of an individual that is not working or employed is tremendous to a government, to the county. So it's best and wise of all of us to really work together as hard as we can to ensure that those individuals can become productive members of our society. It's just a no-brainer. And this year, I'm extremely happy of the support that we've been getting from the Freeholders. And I know Bruce, you've been working really hard, Sandy, John, I mean, all of you have had in many capacities at many levels. But this year, this year is the first year where we got together and aligned as different organizations and entities to create a sequential, step-by-step process, and that's the folder that Iris gave you, where if you're 16 or 18, as early as high school, this is the path that you can take. You could, you know, join a transition program in your school, like the Wayne District. You could potentially go to college and get a credit for a class. You don't have to go to a two-year program, you don't have to go to a four-year program. You could obtain credits or a certificate that you could become an assistant aide at a hospital or pushing patients or a security guard. Think about that. And then we partnered with the district to bring the kids to William Patterson and the North Jersey Credit Union to open the door to about seven to nine high school students that work and got paid through the One Stop, through the youth program that the county has. And that's just a little group of people that got together and put this... Can you imagine what it could be if we all worked together and find more resources that opened the door to our children? Thank you for indulging me, thank you for listening to me, but most important, you know, let's continue to work together to make a difference. Thank you.
All right, at this time, we'll take some pictures.
Now, we are going to review, now we are going to have the overview of today's Youth in Government Day activities.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Samia.
I'm Cheyenne.
And I'm Nora.
We would like to start by saying thank you. This day has been an amazing and informative experience. Youth in Government Day has been very beneficial and is highly appreciated. We would like to, we would like to say thank you to Louis M. Ha for making Youth in Government Day a success, and Freeholder Director John Bartlett for his informative presentation on Freeholders' Job Overview.
We would also like to thank County Administrator Anthony De Nova, members of the Board of Chosen Freeholders, Sheriff Richard Burnett, the State County Prosecutor Camila Valdez, the State County Surrogate Judge Bernice Toledo, and Danielle Ireland M. Ha, who is a Passaic County clerk, for taking the time out of the day to educate us on the basics of law.
We appreciate the very interesting meeting of Passaic County Community College with Dr. Stephen Rose and Ms. Stephanie Decker, the tour of the de-mansion in Tardowa Wayne by Kelly Ruffel, and the information presented by Lucinda Corrado at Preetness Healthcare Center, along with the arrangement of allowing us to participate in musical bingo with the senior residents. On behalf of us U.S. U.S., we hope to have a pleasure, we hope to have the pleasure of participating in this event again. Thank you.
Director, this now cools my administration report.
We are now going to review the K-1 to K-48 agenda. Counsel, are there any least thymes?
amended resolutions, K-28, resolution for change order number five for Smith-Sondi Asphalt Construction Company for the 2015 Lower County Roadway Resurfacing Project in Clifton, Hawthorne, Little Falls, North Hilden, Passaic, and Patterson, New Jersey. K-44, resolution authorizing purchase of various items by the Passaic County Sheriff's Department. Late starters, K-49, resolution appointing Patrick Solven as a member of the Camp Hold Commission for the term provided by law effective immediately and terminating December 31, 2023, replacing Patricia Ring. K-50, resolution authorizing the director purchasing to reject the bids for the Passaic County relocation of the Sheriff's Department motor pool in the city of Patterson, New Jersey. K-51, resolution for the change order number nine, final to Smith-Sondi Asphalt Construction Company as it pertains to the 2016 Lower County Roadway Resurfacing Project in Clifton, Hawthorne, Little Falls, North Hilden, Patterson, and Tardowa, New Jersey. K-52, resolution formally concurring with the votes cast by participants in the Youth in Government Day in the County of Passaic and directing the clerk to the board to record said votes in the usual manner for the purposes of the official records of the board.
Do any Freeholders have any questions regarding the agenda?
I actually do. But I'll ask before. You had two things that you said initially. One was, I think I wrote it, which they were, was the change order, I think, 34, maybe?
Yeah, I'll add.
Two that she said I did not write down.
Yeah, the resolution, K-28, there's an error in the addition on change order.
So we're amending it?
So that one is going to be amended. The other one, which is K-44, which is a purchase by the Passaic County Sheriff's Department, the resolution does not have the COOP number for the North County COOP. So we're going to amend that to include that number.
Counsel, do we have any reason to go into a dictation session?
No.
Can I have a motion to adjourn the conference agenda?
I move it.
Can I have a roll call?
Freeholder Acker?
Yes.
Freeholder Bass?
Just for the, just for the record, we're going to allow, we're going to allow Freeholder Acker and Freeholder Bass to vote, but their votes will be, they'll be absent, they are not on the dais, but we're allowing the students to say yes.
Freeholder Duffy?
Here.
Freeholder James?
Yes.
Freeholder Lapore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes.
May I have the invocation? The announcement of the open public meeting.
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of the open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location included in the annual notice. Adapted at the reorganization meeting filed with the county fair posted in the administration's building and mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of BOA.
Roll call.
Freeholder Acker?
Here.
Freeholder Bass?
Here.
Freeholder Duffy?
Here.
Freeholder James?
Here.
Freeholder Lapore?
Here.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Here.
Director Bartlett?
Here.
Please rise for the invocation.
Oh God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love, be gracious enough so to bless thy servants, our Freeholders in this county of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord. Amen.
We will now have Freeholder Bass lead us into the flag seat.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a moment of silence to remember all the men and women who have died serving the United States Armed Forces. Now, may I have the motion? May I have a motion to approve of minutes for October 32, 2019? Move it. Okay, October 8. Move it. Make the motion. Roll call.
Freeholder Acker?
Here.
Freeholder Bass?
Here.
Freeholder Duffy?
Here.
Freeholder James?
Yes.
Freeholder Lapore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
May I have a motion, approve of proclamation?
I'll move it.
Send.
All right, so it was moved by Freeholder Lapore, seconded by Lazara.
Roll call.
Freeholder Acker?
Yes.
Freeholder Bass?
Yes.
Freeholder Duffy?
Yes.
Freeholder James?
Yes.
Freeholder Lapore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes.
Freeholder Bruce James? Okay, Freeholder Report. So I don't have a report. Does anybody have a report?
This is a reminder that the nonprofit summit this Friday at 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Public Safety Academy in Wayne. We invite everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. The Public Safety Committee, there are seven resolutions for the Freeholders' review and support. Thank you.
There is no communications. Can I have a motion for the oral portion?
I move it.
Second.
Made by Freeholder Lapore, seconded by Freeholder Lazara.
Roll call. Roll call.
Freeholder actor?
Yes.
Freeholder best?
Yes.
Freeholder Duffy?
Yes.
Freeholder James?
Yes.
Freeholder Lepore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Can we have a motion to close the public? Do anyone want to speak to the freeholders? Should approach the podium. You have three minutes. Please sign in. Anything you say will be part of the public record.
This is J. Cohen, 2319 Warrens Way, Wantacue, New Jersey. First of all, it's nice to know that the freeholders can be replaced. You have such a capable young people here. I have two items. One is a very parochial item. On Ringwood Avenue, in one of the worst roads in this county of Passaic, the road through Wantacue, there have been signs up for a month that say, "Construction, one way, there's a light there that's going to go off and on." My understanding is that that project has been over for at least a month. I would like to know why the signs are still there. Hopefully, you're going to replace the, not the friction surface, which hasn't been done. But the signs are still there, and they don't need to be there, I don't think. Secondly, as a general, recently, I've been selected to be part of a recycling committee at the Wantacue Reserve. And we have been hitting our heads against the wall, what to do with recyclable materials. We found out that Route 23 is closed, and certainly, Mr. De Nova answered my emails and told me it was closed. We, I didn't see a notice of it, the old silo. And the new freeholders can ask the old freeholders what that means. It was a Nike missile silo. What I'm asking for is, we want to be green. We want to be able to let the residents of Passaic County get rid of their recyclable materials, but there is no easy way to do it. If you want to get rid of light bulbs, or you want to get rid of televisions, or you want to get rid of computers, from time to time, the local communities may have collections, but there is no drop-off points for people if they want to bring them. So that we're, we're encouraging people, certainly with light bulbs, we're encouraging people to take light bulbs and batteries and just throw them in the garbage, which is not really acceptable. And I, and I would like to urge the freeholders to come up with some solutions. I don't expect an answer tonight, but I'd like, you know, them to come up with some solutions of how we can make Passaic County a more green county. How can you make it easier, also for senior citizens, because senior citizens have difficulty disposing of large items like televisions and big computers and so forth. So I urge you to consider that, and I hope that you will. I'm signing in, that's what we're supposed to do.
Hello, my name is Victor Wu, and I'm from 170 Persian Road in Clifton. I am the current meet director for NJSIA Cross, North One Cross Country Championships being held at Garrett Mountain, as well as the assistant meet director for this Friday's Passaic County Cross Country Championships. I just want to first thank the county freeholders, as well as the Parks Department, for helping us make sure that Garrett Mountain is still viable as a venue for cross-country at a high school level, as well as a college level. And I would also like to invite the county freeholders to, to come to our championship meet, which starts at 4 o'clock this Friday. I came back a couple months to invite you earlier, but just as a reminder, because we would really like to see you there. The meet starts at four, and the varsity races start at approximately 4:20, and the championship presentation will be at approximately 4:50, 5 o'clock. And it would be great if you can come there, and, you know, we would love to have you present the awards for our winners, for both the boys and girls teams on that Garrett Mountain. And that's it, and I'd like to just thank you again for all your continued support.
Seeing no one at the podium, I move to close the public portion.
Freeholder actor? Freeholder best?
Yes.
Freeholder Duffy?
Yes.
Freeholder James?
Yes.
Freeholder Lepore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes.
Now, as a reminder for the amended resolutions, K-28 and K-44.
Director, if I can respond to Mr. Jay. First of all, thanks for making the trip down here. It's always a pleasure to see you. I'm a little surprised that Wantacue is probably one of the few municipalities in the State County that does not provide recycling for its residents. I know Lil Park, they have a whole yard that accepts all kinds of recycling. I know Clifton does it. I know Hawthorne does it. I know Toddewell does it. I know Lil Falls does it. There are, I'm surprised, Wantacue especially.
Twice a year.
No, we have.
I know that. They do it twice a year.
I think you should direct your concerns to your mayor and council, because obviously, it's something that they have the budget for, and we pay to have the recycling in the room. So I would encourage Jay to pay a visit to the hall at their next meeting.
I have, and they're calling to come to you.
Of course. Yeah, that's not. But that's, I just want you to know that most municipalities have recycling. I'm going within the, thank you.
I am not an attorney, but you live in a condominium community, so if you pay for it, I believe the town has to reimburse you for it, the garbage recycling. So check that out. You have, you have an attorney who is connected to your complex. There are certain things that you provide, Garby can pick up, things like that. The town has to reimburse you, even for lighting of streets. So they reimburse your, they're required by law to reimburse your, your association. Your recycling, when you pay for it, the town has to, I believe the town has to...
Call the Kelly Building.
The Kelly Building, not Gene, but just the Kelly Building. Right? And, and I'm serious, you'll get that paid for. You could be doing your own and have it picked up. Talk to your attorney, and you can solve your own problem very easily. Plus, the county does four times a year do electronic, you know, debts at the Nike base, we do electronics and tires, I think, things like that. But if you do your own, you'll pay for it, but the town will reimburse you or so, and that should go against your pay.
Director, if I can, just a reminder, this November 9th, the important hazardous waste recycling effort will take place at the city hall.
I would also like to say, if there still are signs that are left, the roof department will be picking them up tomorrow, so you don't have to worry about that.
That's two, you got two out of that.
Can I have a motion for the K resolutions?
I move it.
You're talking about, you're talking about late starters?
Yeah, I would, I would, I would ask, I would ask the board to allow the late amended resolutions at the conference meeting, in addition to the late, the four late starters. That is to be canceled. That's why I asked. But that, that, that motion needs to be made.
So, seconded by Duffy?
Roll call.
Freeholder actor?
Yes.
Freeholder best?
Yes.
Freeholder Duffy?
Yes.
Freeholder James?
Yes.
Freeholder Lepore?
Yes.
Freeholder, sorry, Deputy Director Lazar?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Can I have a, can I have a motion to adopt K-1 through K-51?
I move it.
Second.
Everybody, it's coming to K-1 through K-51. Okay. We already did, we already have it.
All these things, they're amended and are added. Now we're going on...
Correct. All right. And we have motion by Freeholder Lepore.
Second.
Seconded by Freeholder Lazar.
Roll call.
Freeholder actor?
Yes.
Freeholder best?
Yes.
Freeholder Duffy?
Yes.
Freeholder James?
Yes.
Freeholder Lepore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Freeholders, can I have a motion to adopt K-52?
I'll second.
That is the actual freeholders.
I'll second.
Duffy and James. And please, the freeholders, answer this. Freeholders Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
New business, personnel, bills?
I move that.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Freeholder actor?
Yes.
Freeholder best?
Yes.
Freeholder Duffy?
Yes.
Freeholder James?
Yes.
Freeholder Lepore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes.
Bills?
I move that.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Freeholder actor?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
With?
I move it.
Roll call.
Freeholder Lazar made the motion, seconded by Lepore.
Roll call.
Freeholder actor?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes.
You guys all did a great job. You really did a fabulous thing. Just stand where you are. Everybody stand up, we'll get a picture of everybody.
Bye, Mordell.